Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Jerome?
President, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel, absent, we have Quorm.
Great, well, the agenda for the day is to conduct the interview with you, Mr. Rowley. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we do have a list of questions to ask, but I'd like to offer you an opportunity to make some opening comments if you would like.
All right. Well, I do appreciate the opportunity to be here. We've met several times on Zoom, so I feel like I do know you in some sense in today's world, in today's technology. I will just say again, thank you for the opportunity and just to share with you just a couple of brief thoughts that you asked a question at the first interview about my background, and I went into, I took that as you were interested more in the professional side as opposed to the personal side. And I've since rethought that maybe you need just a little tiny bit of the personal side, so if that's appropriate, I'll share with you real briefly.
Please, please.
All right, thank you. I'm originally from Fort Huron. I was born and raised there, right next to the Blue Water Bridge, so we were within walking distance of Lake Huron. And I grew up in a multi-generational home, my parents and I, and my grandparents lived downstairs. It was a duplex. And I've already explained to you my educational background. My wife and I have four children, all adults and scattered across the country as kids will do nowadays. We have one in Colorado. Our daughter and son-in-law are in Texas and have our only granddaughter, so Emmeline is just over a year old now. And the twins, one is here in Michigan and the other one works for the federal government in Washington. So we don't see the family that often because of the distance, but with Zoom and technology the way it is, we do keep track of that. So just a real brief summary there on a little bit of the family.
Thank you. Well, Amy, do you want to say anything before we get started with the questions?
Well, I just want to thank the staff and the board for their continued support and engagement in this process, and thank you, David Rowley, for coming down to be here today.
Thank you.
Well, and given that one of our trustees is absent, we invited Amy to participate in the posing of the questions.
All right.
So with that, trustee Carteau, would you like to start?
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Rowley. So glad that you're here with us today.
Thank you very much.
The township has three open positions, an HR generalist, a project manager, and a deputy treasurer. We need all of these positions filled as quickly as possible. What actions would you take to facilitate filling these positions?
First, I would ask to review all the job descriptions to make sure that those are all current, and if they are, then proceed with some, starting with some advertising on those. But if they're not current, then that's the first step that we need to do is agree upon exactly what are the job duties of those positions and the knowledge, skills, and abilities of those positions. And then, in today's world, everything seems to be more speedily done electronically, so I would suggest that we utilize an online campaign. We advertise in any appropriate professional associations that there may be if any of these individuals have a certain criteria that they're supposed to have or a license or certification or something like that. See about the professional associations for that. Also, things like Indeed, those are a good source, and some of the other online employment opportunities. I don't think, with all due respect to our consultant, I don't think we need a consultant right at the moment for those positions. I think that's something we could do in-house, but in the event that was needed, then certainly a professional consulting company could be utilized. But I think the nature of these, the other thing that I would suggest is that you give the potential candidates an opportunity to respond, but don't make it too long. And what I mean by that is I've seen some job postings in my career that are 30 days, 45 days, 60 days, and so on. And unfortunately, if you were one of the first to apply, you didn't hear much until 45 days later. You might get an acknowledgement that, yeah, your application's been received, but people will move on to other things if there's not some, time is of the essence, in other words. So utilize as many online sources as possible, and I would hope that we could get a decent candidate pool and move forward on that. And, you know, maybe I'm being ambitious, but 30 to 45 days would be a goal or at least something to target. As they say, depending on whether the applications, I'm sorry, the job descriptions are already prepared, would be a huge step. They are, okay. Then that step has already been done, so we can move right into the processing of the applications, of the formulating of the advertising campaign.
Thank you.
Clerk Flinton?
What are the best practices that you have seen implemented for attracting and retaining talent?
A good work environment, a good salary, and a good benefit package. The reason I applied many, many years ago to the city of Mal Pleasant was for that very reason, was the benefit package. Not that the job I was leaving was bad, it wasn't. It was a wonderful place, there were wonderful people, but I was a lot younger in those days, and the, I think the twins were like three, so the salary and the benefit package was an attractive mix. The other thing to be able to go to a community like the city that I was at, I could retire from that. You know, that was an attractive thing. So you're looking for people, you want to show them a good work environment, you want to show them an attractive salary and benefit package, and my experience has been if you can do that, you will get longevity out of your employees, and some people will stay 20, 25, 30 years. As I understand it, the gentleman who was your assessor was here for 40 years. So you've seen that firsthand, that longevity is possible in the right environment.
Great, thank you.
How would you provide training and support to someone who is struggling to do their job and needs coaching?
Well, first off, we would sit down and have a conversation about what exactly is the struggle? What are you struggling with? Is it the computer program? Is it the understanding of the task? What is the nature of the issue? And once we can define that, then we can deploy resources to that. Perhaps if it's a computer program that they're struggling with, depending on the nature of the program, there's a lot of training opportunities. So maybe it's an Excel, or it's a Word, or it's Microsoft Office, or if you're dealing with BSNA software, I know for a fact BSNA has training courses to assist in that. So the first thing is to have that conversation with that person and get a clear understanding of what it is that they're lacking, and then give them, now maybe it's something that we can do in-house, depending on the nature of what it is that they're looking for. If we can do that in-house, so much the better. But I certainly would not be opposed to getting additional outside resources to help them overcome that. And again, we want that in a timely manner. We want to do that as quickly as possible so that they're more satisfied in the job that they're trying to do.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Yes, good afternoon. A pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you again. How would you ensure that everyone in the township has appropriate training and support?
For the employees, first off, I would want to see the knowledge, skills, and abilities that's already in place for the job descriptions, and just get an idea of what comfort level all of those particular employees have with that certain, with those knowledge, skills, and abilities. And then kind of the same thing, we just had the conversation about the employee that's struggling, even if the employee is not struggling, they're doing a great job, just have that conversation with them and decide, is there anything that we can help them with to make their job an easier fit? Or in other words, is there more information that's available, there's more technology that's available to help them do their job in a more efficient way with less stress on the employee? You know, the part of the organizational development program that I was part of is that you want to use as much resources as possible to make the employee more satisfied in the job that they have. So we want to provide those resources, but first we need to find out where they are in their own comfort level. Some employees may be totally fine with where they are, but have that conversation with each individual one to see what resources that we can assist them with and make their job easier for them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Have you previously worked with a board that included individuals who did not trust one another and did not get along? If so, please share how you navigated this situation, and if not, just share how you would navigate this situation.
Yes, the one board at the township that I worked in, unfortunately, started off that way, and in that particular case, the issue simply was the fact that the board members did not have a firm grasp of what it was that they were supposed to be doing. In other words, the trustees did not have a firm grasp of the role of the trustee, that particular supervisor, that particular clerk, and that particular treasurer had their own views on what the statutory duties were, and that was the real root of the cause of their problem. So how that was resolved is there was literally a work session, and we had to go through each one, each job description, and in that particular case, what was really causing it was that the job descriptions were outdated. It was a much smaller community, and those job descriptions were outdated. So it wasn't that, in that particular case, that those individuals were just going off on a tangent. They were following a description, but the description hadn't been updated to coincide with the statutory duties. Okay, so basically, it's a communication issue and a realization that we're all in the same situation. In other words, what I mean by that is we all have the best interests of the community at heart, and we need to look at the various options and understand that each one of us has a different role, and some of those roles are dictated by statute. And statute says, this is what you do, this is when you do, this is how you do, that's what it is. But there are other opportunities that the board will decide policy, and that's totally within the board's authority to do that. And as you well know, with a seven-person board, it will take four persons to make policy, or will have to agree, whatever that particular policy would be. But I would, in the case I'm describing, we were able to resolve that one simply by discovering that the root cause of the issue was the fact that they had faulty information to start with. So I'm not sure I know the whole gist of the cause of the question, but I would say that just as a finish, is that we do something similar, just to review, and maybe you've already done that, but just to review every statutory job duty and just make sure everyone is on the same page with that understanding of who's responsible for what, as defined by statute, including the administrator's role. The administrator is going to have certain duties and other duties are not within that function.
In the situation that you're describing, did you have to bring in an outside facilitator or did you facilitate this discussion?
At that point, that clerk asked me to do it. They were, it was a much more, it was a much smaller community than this one, and they did not have the resources of this community, and I had the educational background, and so I was asked to work with that particular township board. So it was, we did it in-house.
Thank you. Interesting.
Treasurer Palmer?
I think you may have addressed this question in part. How have you coached and supported staff in the past that have needed training? I think you've alluded as to how.
Sure, sure. Well, there's been several over the years, and basically, it's similar to what I described before. First, to find out what exactly are they missing? Is it something that they misunderstood, or is it simply a skill that they did not have? And once we discover the root cause of that, then we would figure out what's the most advantageous way to do it. The one person that I'm thinking of needed additional training in one of the computer programs. Excellent employee, worked her hard out, eight to five every day, but there was too many errors in the processing. She just didn't quite grasp the methodology. It was a BSNA program, so we're clear on that. And as you probably well aware, BSNA's got all kinds of nuances to it, and it makes a difference as to where that data goes to make sure that it's accurate. And so in her particular case, once we discovered that she was doing everything that she was asked to do, data-wise, she just didn't quite understand the difference as to where, how it interacted in the computer program. We provided her that opportunity to go to a BSNA class, and specifically in that field of that entry, and she came back, thanked us, and it's like, oh, that was wonderful, now I get it. She was assuming that her interpretation of the data screen was correct, and it wasn't. And unfortunately, she hadn't asked that question until after several sessions had gone on. It's like, we really need to get a handle on here because we're getting reports that are not correct, the errors are coming up. And, you know, when you're dealing with budgets, two and two has to be four, and it just wasn't.
At least it has been.
At least it has been.
Thank you.
Ms. Sell?
So part of this role is to be the township chief information officer. What would be your vision for this role?
I would want to review all of the ways that the township currently sends out information, press releases, do we use social media? If we do, what? I did take a quick look. There appears to be a Facebook page, there appears to be a Twitter page from like four years ago, so I'm not sure if that was official or if that was just somebody saying that. There was nothing on it, but it just said Township of Scioto on it, so I thought that was interesting. But how do we provide electronic media in today's world? Because that's basically, many people will not get, or receive, or even are interested in print media. Everything for them is electronic. I mentioned my wife and I have four kids. All they do is text us. I can barely get them on the phone. So that electronic system is what we really need to concentrate on. We were walking over to the fire hall and noticed the bulletin board that's posted for public meetings, and while that's still required, and I know the township does that, you also publish your agendas and your packets electronically so that the public has that instant access to it. So a complete review of everything that is done electronically for the media, how do we issue press releases, you know, just in general, and also in an emergency, if there's an emergency situation. Do we have also an emergency alert system? Sometimes that will be through police or fire or the county, sometimes that's local units, you know, an individual unit of government. So in the event of an actual emergency of some kind, is there some type of an alert that can be sent out so that that information is available? Because not every piece of information needs to be acted on right away, but in the event that something does, is there that mechanism? So a full review of everything and see what makes the most sense. You know, maybe social media isn't the way, but then again, depending on how people want to consume their information. And the other thing, while I'm thinking about it, maybe, and maybe I don't know if this has been done here or not, but a poll that the community could, that you could give out to the community, how would you, the citizens of this township, like to receive your information on a regular basis? I know that there are communities that have a listserv where you can sign up for it, and it's your choice. It's your choice if you want to sign up for it, but you type that in, and we send out weekly, you know, every Monday, every Wednesday, whatever it may be, sources of information, just general information.
Want to do a follow-up?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Yes, David, a follow-up to the question about information.
Sure.
So thank you for describing kind of the information and how we communicate out, and I have a question about internal information and data systems. So here in a township, you know, we've got water, sewer, fire, assessing, all sorts of data systems, and frankly, we don't do a very good job of using our data to inform our decision-making. So can you talk a little bit about where you might look in the township if you were to get this position, in terms of what sets of data you'd look at to inform which decisions?
One thing that has been made clear to me is that you use BSNA software.
Correct.
BSNA is a great base, and it serves as the hub. If you think about it, because this is a conversation we had several years ago in another jurisdiction, but if you use the BSNA software, particularly the assessing package, as the hub of the wheel, because that's where the parcels are kept, that's where the values are kept, that's where the taxable value is kept, the name, the address, is all of that, and then you think of the various departments as the spokes of the wheel. So the assessing data is going to feed into the treasurer's data so that the treasurer's office can generate tax bills. It can feed into a GIS system, if you have one, and then you can use that data to create all kinds of reports that you need for planning, for zoning, for, you can get a report that shows we had access to a tree survey, so you could find every maple tree in town, and you could get a map of that, if that was part of the question that you needed. But that data started with the hub, so because you needed streets and longitude and all that kind of thing. Also, BSNA is expanded into the cloud, and there may be an opportunity to look at some of the additional packages that they have. I know they have a community development package that might be appropriate to investigate to see if that would help. The same thing with their, they have an HR package that's coming. I don't believe there's a cemetery here. Okay. But there's a cemetery fund or package that they have as well, so if that's ever something the township does, there's a program for it.
We have some pioneer cemeteries.
Pioneer, there you go, there you go. But also, you know, that's just the data, that's just the data. The biggest thing that you need to look at, in my experience, is that when you are upgrading your software, whether it's Word, whether it's Excel, whatever the program is, if one person is being upgraded, all of you are upgrading, so at the same time. Because obviously, there was a new version that came out, so that if one person is on Windows 7 and one person's on Windows 11, that's not going to work. That's not going to work. You want to be able to share files instantly and have that data not have to convert, not have to, not be able to be open. So all of those systems internally, there should be an IT function. And I don't know, structurally, and I know there was an IT on the list.
Yes, we actually have a, our assessor who was here for 43 years was also our IT guy. So we have happily moved to the managed IT services firm. So we're still adjusting to that, but it's called NetSmart.
Okay, okay. So we'd start there. We would start there and just see. The other thing, it's a policy decision, but how are you funding IT? In other words, computers. And you mentioned the assessor's office, so I'll use the assessor as an example. If the assessor's office needs a new computer, is that something that they can do through their own department budget, or is there an IT budget that's dealt just with computers? That's a policy decision. But that would also influence the timing and the upgrades. You'd centralize it if you can, would be my suggestion, because you want all of those programmings to be in sync. And I can tell you from personal experience that when they're not in sync, that causes tremendous, tremendous problems in workflow. I was getting reports from the treasurer's office that would not open on my computer because we were on two different programs, or two different versions of Excel. And that, you can't answer the question if you can't see the data. So that would be my suggestion on the IT side.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Carteau?
Thank you, and that actually naturally leads into my question, which is to describe your experience with technologies such as GIS and websites. And since you've already talked about some of the data systems, I wonder if you could talk more about your GIS specific.
Sure, sure.
GIS and website experience in specific.
Okay. Do we have a GIS capability here?
Well, very little.
Very little, okay.
I'm sorry. I mean, we have the program, we don't have staff using it other than our consultant, our planner, our consultant.
Other than the planner.
Well, our consulting engineer has our whole GIS file for our water and sewer system. Our assessor, associate assessor Andrea, has a basic working, and we have ArcGIS. And then third, Carlisle Wartman, our planning consultant, does GIS. So we don't have, in terms of in-house here, Jackie, we have some expertise, but we also have, you know, major files in three different places.
Yep, yep, okay, okay. What I have seen GIS do is that, in my experience with the city, is there was a GIS person, there was a GIS department, and that particular individual obtained all of the data, starting with the assessing files, and then also parks and rec added files, the trees, all of that type of thing was added, and so there was multiple layers that were included in those GIS. All of us that were on the management team, we had access to everything. The other departments had access as needed. So in other words, the assessing department could get into the property, the finance could get into the financial aspects. If you had a specific request, you could make it of the GIS person. But at any rate, what you can do with that is that you can build queries into the data and see exactly what it is that you're trying to look at. So as an example, you could call up a layer that shows you where every fire hydrant is. So you've got a new subdivision that's going to be planned. Where's the nearest water main that goes through? Where's the sewer line that goes through? So that that can be part of that. I've seen GIS queries done to generate things like that. Also, there were still a few streets that weren't paved. There was a disagreement as to where they were, so we called them up and said, yeah, that's it, right there. So there's issues like that, but each level of data is, or I'm sorry, each set of data is its own level. And in GIS, you turn on the levels that you need. Don't turn on everything because it's going to, you're not going to be able to, it's not going to be user-friendly, it's not going to work. But you turn on the levels that you need. So if you need the housing level, you can turn that on, if you need the street level, you can turn that on. There's special assessments here. It's a great tool for that. You can see where the water line special assessment goes, you can see where the street light special assessment goes, the sidewalk special assessment, and it can also be defined as to the year of the assessment, and also there's a box that can have additional data on the, from the GIS system that you can add to. The special assessment goes from 2021 to 2029, or whatever it may be. So you've got that comment box right there available. But all of that was done in-house. This sounds like it's a little bit different from that standpoint, but I would, just by listening, it sounds like that many of those features are still there, they're just decentralized.
And if I, I just want to say the project manager position, you know, the GIS capability that we want to build here. the GIS capability that we want to build here, you know, we posted it in each, the administrator and project manager.
Sure, yes, yes.
You know, but we are hoping to hopefully, you know, through the project manager, bring that on. And also, over time, you know, improve our data, keep it fresh, integrate it, but also reduce our outside spending on more expensive consultants when something like GIS is something that can be done more cost-effectively here.
You're going to have, you're going to have some infrastructure costs upfront.
Yeah.
There's some special, I don't remember the exact program we used, but there's a special program that was very user-friendly, once you got the basics in there. Also, the BSNA software interfaces with many of the GIS systems very well. And you can download that, so it's very good from a, from a sales analysis or a property analysis concept. Again, but the applications are there, you can do it for parks, streets, sidewalks, you know, because it's all, it's all layered. It's all layered.
Clerk Plentoff, here actually the next question.
Sorry. Great. How could a strategic planning session benefit the community? And as a follow-up, so one is, how could a strategic planning session benefit the community? And what is your approach to helping a board set objectives and goals?
In both cases, they're going to be similar. As far as the community is concerned, the community should be invited to an open house, for lack of a better word. And basically, what it is, is the opportunity. Here's the map of the township. What do you want as a citizen, as a resident, as a taxpayer? What do you want this community to look like next year, five years from now, and 10 years from now? Do you see a pattern in land use? Do you see a need for middle housing? Do you see a need for more single-family housing? Do you see a need for multifamily housing? Do you see a need for commercial or industrial? You gather all of that from the, from the public and give them the opportunity to provide that. And then you take that information and then, working with the township board, develop a... I would, I would suggest it be something kind of a retreat, where it's not done in the building, it's done locally though, but you're in a, a non-government setting. Simply to get, to get into the right frame of mind, because, well, the government buildings are wonderful. This is where you work every day. And you want to, not, you want, even subconsciously, you don't want that mindset. You want to be able to think strategically and logically and rationally about every idea that's being presented. And my experience has been, that makes the most sense. And that's, you get more free-flowing discussion if you're in a quote-unquote neutral setting. Or in other words, you're in a, a private setting, such as opposed to a public building. Now, it's an open meeting, the public is certainly welcome, it's posted and all of that. But you're not physically in this room, as an example. And then we would go through, we would go through some facilitation exercises to say, these are the things that we're hearing from the public. What are we hearing from you, the members of the township board? And how do those ideas align? Because quite honestly, we all have different ideas, we all have different goals, we all have different objectives, we all look at things a little bit differently. But when you have that opportunity to get there and you see all of those things, there will be natural patterns that begin to develop. And then you can kind of combine some of those themes, if you will. Maybe it's a quality of life theme that's coming out of the public, where we've been discussing infrastructure. You know, and maybe, maybe that's not a problem, or maybe that's not a perception. But that, but those things, you get the public engaged in that, they give you the idea. And also, I will say one thing is, just be aware, because I've seen it. You can do that and the public will agree, this is the direction we want to go. And then when you start down there, someone will say, why are you going down that road? That's not what we said. It's like, yeah, it is. So there will always be, there will always be those types of conversations. But facilitation sessions, for one, and an open, open session for the public and then take that and get a little bit more in-depth with the township board with some facilitation techniques that are available.
Thank you.
How would you support the upcoming budget process?
I understand your fiscal year is April to March. So I would, I would be of the opinion, based on, I have looked at your website and I've seen some of the materials that's there for the, I forgot the official title, Budget Committee? Budget Finance?
Budget Finance Committee.
Budget Finance. So I have seen some of that. You do have a excellent timeline, because that was going to be one of my suggestions if you haven't done that already. Is to develop that timeline as to who's responsible for what and at what time, so that all of that process can come together. You want your budget process done early enough so that the draft budget, the proposed budget, can be presented to the township board en masse and the public with ample opportunity for the public to offer comment, or for the township board itself to offer additional comment. Right now, let's see, we're going into November. If your fiscal year begins April 1, you probably are going to have to adopt the budget either in February or March. I believe, is there something that says February is your date?
No, it's March 31st.
It is March, okay.
And we've tested that.
Okay. So as long as, as long as the budget's adopted in March, you know, that's fine. If you can, if you can do it in February.
Yeah, that would be better off.
That would be, you'd be much better off. That just requires the timeline. And maybe what you want to consider looking at is, if your timeline extends all the way to March for the next cycle, push it back one month to February, so that your goal is to be completely done by February 28. And then just backdate all of those other tasks, that extra month or two of time. Simply because, it was said in one of the videos, one of the educational things, the governance. No one planned for the pandemic. I think it was, I think it was the presenter that did your finance.
Yeah, Karen Langkett.
Yes, yes. No one predicted COVID. No one predicted that by any, any yardstick you wanted to use. So that was an issue that all governments had to react to. Some did a better job than others over time, as, as, you know, we saw across the state. But that adjusted a lot of timelines. And if you were too tight to the line, you might not have been able to meet it. So you want that window, because, yeah, if the deadline's March 31st, then that's the deadline by statute. But to my knowledge, there's nothing says that you couldn't adopt it on February 28th if you're all set, ready to go. It's just not going to take effect until April 1st anyway. So that's, that's an idea, that's a possibility. Simply, just for the sake of unknowns. But it also gives people the opportunity to know that if there is something that was unknown, there's a chance to amend it if necessary. Because even though you adopted it and something came up the 1st of March, you could reopen it and revise it, because it's not due yet. So that'd be a suggestion.
Great. Trustee Jerome.
What ideas do you have to help increase dialogue and discussion on key issues for the board?
I would suggest that we consider, the board considers work sessions. From what I've seen of the agendas, I've not seen that on there. And if it is, then to be fair, I missed it, but I don't, I'm not seeing it on there, at least not specifically spelled out. And what I'm referring to is, if you've got an idea, you've got a program, you've got a project that is going to be presented to the board, the first thing I would suggest is that there be a work session where it's very clear right up front that no action is going to be taken today on this particular issue. This is a, this is a discussion, this is a presentation. It's a possibility, depending on the nature of it. I might be doing the presentation, the clerk may be doing the presentation, the supervisor, the treasurer, the assessor, whatever, whatever the topic may be, you may get a specialized presentation on it. However, the topic is going to be presented, ideas are going to be discussed. It's going to be a free range of comment, discussion, opinion, speculation. But no action is going to be taken at that, at that work session. Then, once the opportunity is there to gather that information, to see it, to digest it, to think about it, to ask follow-up questions, then it will come up at a future meeting for the board's full consideration in the form of a motion and second. And then you'll have debate on the issue. Actually, then you're going to have debate on the merits of the issue, because some of the other comments that you would normally be asking are already going to have been, already would have been answered. So that, I would suggest that that work session be there and so that topics can be addressed in a more informal manner before the need for a formal vote and debate, if you will, on the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Noble.
Have you encountered sexism and misogyny?
Recording in progress.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I just turned it on, I hadn't realized it had been paused. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Kathy.
That's okay. I'll go over it again. Have you encountered sexism and misogyny in the workplace?
I don't, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. How would you ensure that the workplace is inclusive and incidents of bias are not tolerated and are addressed appropriately?
I can honestly say that I've not seen that personally. I've been fortunate that I've not seen that personally. But I would suggest that there be a policy issue or policy discussion that makes it very clear for all employees as to what the expectations are of employees' conduct. That all individuals are important to the organization, all points of view are welcome, and a person's background is not part of the workforce. In other words, we are here as individuals to perform our task and that's, that's the standard on which we are, we are reviewed, is how we perform those individual tasks. So there should be a policy that applies to everyone in the organization as to the code of conduct, as to what's expected.
Treasurer Palmer.
How is SIAO Township similar or different to other townships you've been around in?
In terms of other townships, you are, you are larger than several. And about the same size, but a little smaller than others. Most of the townships that I have, that I've personally worked with in one way, shape, or form over my career have been charter townships, so that the structure is a little bit different, the duties are a little bit different. But there are, I've also worked with many general law townships. But SIAO was a little unique there, because most of the general law townships have been much smaller. Their, their staffs have been smaller, their budgets have been smaller. There are only five-person boards as opposed to the seven, which is its own interesting mix of discussion as well. SIAO is very similar to a city because of the size of your budget and the size of the population. You're very comparable, in my experience, you're very comparable to many of the cities across the state of Michigan as opposed to many of the township. Is that me? I shut that off twice. I'm sorry. It just won't hold. So the analogy there, as I say, is to some of the cities because of the, of the size of the budget and also the size of the population. Many of the townships are, as I say, are just much smaller. So you're, they do not have a fire, fire department, they don't have access to a police department like the sheriff's substation. And they provide very limited service to their, to their communities.
Thank you.
That brings us back to Ms. Hall.
How would you summarize the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the township?
The strengths of the township, I kind of just mentioned. Your strength is in the fact that you're a good-sized community, you have a good budget, you have a good fund balance. And from some of the projects that I've seen listed on your website, your, the township has been doing some very wonderful things for the betterment of its citizens. But the Fire Home, great example, great example of that. I had a great tour of the building with the fire chief. Fire Department's very proud of that and they should be. I've seen that in other communities, public safety is very important to the citizens. And you want to know that, that your public safety individuals, police and fire are there, ready to go. You also have done wonderful work with the, I might not have the terms right, but the connector to the border-to-border. That is a wonderful project that many communities are not able, able to do. I believe there was a grant or something that was given from the state, or funding from the state, that was part of that. Other communities have not been able to do that. Some of the challenges, I think, as we've already discussed and as you well know, is the contamination issue that's ongoing. So there's water issues, infrastructure issues. That's a challenge, but it's also possibly a opportunity simply because ARPA funds are coming. And water and infrastructure are some of the allowable expenses that will be, will be available through the ARPA fund. So that might be an opportunity there to, to help address some of those infrastructure needs. What I've heard from, from the board members themselves and what I've heard also from staff members is the staff is small, the staff is small. And also, you've lost a lot of institutional memory with people that have retired after many years of service. So that's a challenge going forward, to bring, to bring good, quality people, and I know you have that, but to bring additional quality people into the organization to fill some of those holes, fill some of those gaps, just like the GIS system that you mentioned. While the system that you have may work right now, it's probably not feasible going five and 10 years into the future. So it's probably something should be brought in-house. So some of the challenges there is the staffing needs. And then also, just a good overview, I know the supervisor mentioned in the one interview a while ago that communication with the board members, just discussion amongst the board members. I would say that, that, that's something that we, we are not all going to agree. We're just not. That's just, this is how life goes. But we all have the same goal in mind, we all have the same goal in mind. And that's, that's the important thing, I think, that everybody understands, is that we're all trying to make the community better than what it is. And we want to push it forward into, into its next cycle. We're also, I've also heard, somebody used the word growing pains. That there's, there's still a group of people that like the rural side of the community. There's still a group of people that like the industrial side or the commercial side or the more, the more urban side. I'll use that word. And so you need to find that balance, you need to find that balance. Because they're all citizens of the same community and they all have rights to be heard and, and, and should be heard. So we need to find that balance. I think that's another challenge that could be going forward. But I can say, and I'll just finish with this, is my last four and a half years with Extension, I have traveled the state of Michigan. And I can say that you, you have a very wonderful organization here in this township. And you've done, you've done a good job in shepherding this through and setting it up in the form that it is. Many jurisdictions across the state are not as fortunate with facilities, with staff, and with budget. So SIAO should be very proud of itself for, for, all communities have challenges, but you should be proud of yourself for what you're able to accomplish so far.
Trustee Courtois.
So heading in a slightly different direction.
Sure.
Many issues that local government is faced with, including climate change and the COVID pandemic, depend on understanding sometimes complicated scientific information in fast-moving and evolving fields. How do you keep up with and incorporate scientific information into your decision-making?
I've been fortunate in the fact that I've been four and a half years with Extension. I've been fortunate in the fact that I've been four and a half years with Extension. And so some of that has already been included in part of our presentations. And what I mean by that is, if you had asked me that question 10 years ago, I might have said that it's really not part of the process. But today, it certainly is because there's many resources that are out there now, both at the academic level for universities. And we're very fortunate having Michigan just down the road, as close as it is, to have access to that information. But there's also professional associations that you can gather information from. And also, if we're going back and talking about the online information and the websites and all those types of things, there are many educational professional development opportunities that are available now. Some, there's a fee, but many of them are free. And you just have to know which organization to look to. And there's many of those programs. There's a whole, MSU Extension did a whole series on resiliency not too long ago. And we brought in, now, not every presenter was an MSU Extension staff member. We brought in professionals in the field from other organizations. And so those other organizations have resources as well that you can tie into for some of that professional development information. And it's online. I mean, yeah, you could travel to California if you want, but if you can take the same thing sitting in your office on an hour Zoom, that's a better use of time and resources. And some of the, as I say, some of those opportunities are free of charge as well. So all the online resources that I've seen the last few years.
Clerk Plenta.
David, what are some best practices to engage residents into the workings of the township?
Best practices would be to make it very easy for the community to communicate with the township officials. Again, I go back to the listserv. I strongly believe in that, that they have that so that the information is going to them. The other thing is the information coming to the township, there should be, and you may have this, but there should be an email established for each individual member of the board. And there should also be, on the website, a link that is the board en masse. So in other words, if I click on that, I get all seven in one swoop, okay? So that I can say right to the board en masse, here's my comment, and then that's done electronically. If you do not have, you may consider, again, depending on, again, this is, in a COVID world, this may not be possible. But you may want to consider a designated office hour. So in other words, if someone wants to come in and speak personally to someone, when I say someone, one of the board members, that they know that on the third Wednesday of the month from 4:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, the board members will be available if they would choose to do that. That's just, and simply because there's some people that are not comfortable sending electronically. They still want that face-to-face contact. We have a wide range of people in the community. They are all ages, all backgrounds. Some are still going to want that personal contact if they can get it. Other ones are more than happy to do electronically. The communication is there, or should be there, and make it as easy as possible for the public to communicate with the board. There is a jurisdiction out there, it's not this one, and I won't say which one, but there is a jurisdiction out there that you cannot email the board. They do not have addresses, none at all. And to me, that just says, as a unit of government, I'm not interested in hearing what the public has to say. I don't know the rationale as to why that particular unit of government chose to do that. Their answer is write the board a letter, and we'll make copies and hand-deliver it. In 2021, really? So that, again, just to be very, very simple, but make it as easy as possible for the board to, I'm sorry, for the public to express its opinion to the board because you're the elected officials. And we ultimately are responsible to the people. But they chose to elect seven individuals to fill these roles. And so we have to be very conscious of the views of the public and take those into account and make it easy for them to express that. Lastly, is how you do public comment at meetings. Make it very clear as to what the policy is, that the public has the right to speak. Generally, what I've seen in my career is the public speaks twice or has the opportunity to speak twice at meetings. Once at the beginning of the meeting on any item that's on the agenda, and once at the end of the meeting where it's anything that they would like to say to the board that is not on the agenda. So the topic that they want to talk about is not on the agenda, but just something that they want you to know, or maybe it's something that's coming up in the future. But generally, that's how it is. And you can put limitations, three minutes, five minutes. That's totally, totally fine. But again, just very clear guidance for the board, or for the public to communicate with the board and make it very easy for the public to communicate.
Do you have experiences in organizational development? You know, for example, team building?
Yeah. I was chair of the Process Improvement Committee for Mount Pleasant, which was the organizational development program. And basically, that was a two-year program that we developed and implemented to, let's see, improve work processes through team concepts. And that clearly was team building, problem solving. We developed a series of guidelines for the teams to utilize. Now, this was all done within team development. This wasn't the management just saying, this is, these are the guidelines. It was development in the team. So these were the teams that developed these overall. And then the committee compiled everything and presented the document, which was reviewed and then adopted and approved by everybody, actually. But it's a team building concept where you need to meet on a regular basis. And what regular means is going to depend on the team. For some teams, regular is twice a year. For other teams, it might be twice a month. For some teams, it might be once a week. So that is going to develop that, those team meetings are going to develop that. Be proactive, not reactive, in the organizational development. Your teams are going to begin, they're going to be forming, they're going to start working on their own strategic plans, their own goals, their own objectives. But it's clearly a team approach. There is no, no one person in the team is more important than any other person in the team. It was interesting that one of our team members actually was a former military and had been in the Air Force and actually said that this concept was being utilized in her experience, actually in the Air Force at the base that she was working on. And to even, to exemplify that, the officers would take off their insignias and lay them on the table on the outside. So when you walked in the door, there was no rank in there. Everyone was a team member to have the same input. Then, once you developed that team concept, then it was up to the team to decide who was going to develop which one or which process. That doesn't mean that the leader advocates their role. There are certain requirements for each team leader. There are certain expectations. There are certain expectations of an administrator. There are certain expectations of an elected official. So you're still obligated to perform that. But in the team concept, it's a proactive approach. It's a goal-setting approach. And it is a reward-based approach from the standpoint that you are working with the individual team members to support them in their efforts, to give them the tools that they need to make their jobs easier, not harder, but to make the jobs easier for them, more enjoyable for them. That way, to answer that other question you asked, you get a good work environment and you'll get more longevity out of people.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome.
Do you monitor performance of departments?
Basically, there should be a series of goals and objectives at the beginning of the cycle. If that's done on a calendar year, if that's done on a fiscal year. But there should be an agreed-upon set of goals and objectives for each one of the departments. Do you have any contracts that you're, depending on the department, do you have any contracts that you're responsible for? Do you have any hiring processes that you're responsible for? And what are your timelines for all of those things? And monitor that on a bi-weekly basis, maybe a monthly basis, depending on the team and how much input is needed. But certainly, if you see a deficiency in something, it's something that needs to be addressed right away so that it doesn't cause a long-term obstacle to the team approach or to the team support. You can also have a six-month discussion. I wouldn't call it a review, but a discussion as to what's the status of the team. Are there additional resources that are needed? Any obstacles to the goals and objectives that the team's been working on throughout the year? You can do that quarterly also. But each one of those timelines is going to be specific for the individual team. Some teams are going to require more support than others depending on the nature of the task and whether or not they're dealing with external contracts or internal support staff or, you know, just because of a variety of variables.
Trustee Noble.
What are good ways to support high-performing departments and leaders?
For one, recognition. Everybody likes to know that they've been doing a good job, providing good quality feedback. And that is where most organizations do not do a good job, from what I've seen in my career. But if you've got a high-performing organization or high-performing team, make sure that they are aware that they've been recognized for that and that they are thanked for that, for their service. If it's appropriate, through the organizational development program, it's possible that there's some type of incentive or a reward, if you want to call it that. We did that on a quarterly basis. That the, we had quarterly updates, and then the committee selected one that was the most outstanding in that quarter for recognition. And then they received recognition at one of the Next City Commission meetings. But also, they received a logo, a logo shirt that, as strange as that may sound, that was a big deal. That was a big deal. Because originally, that was the only place that the logo shirt, the city logo shirts came from. So there was a reward there. Some of them, it was kind of a, just an interesting footnote. There was one team that didn't want the shirt. They wanted lunch.
That would have been a light team.
So policy was changed based on popular demand that you had the option. You could have the shirt or you could have lunch. But formal recognition, just that the task was well-done. And also, it was publicly acknowledged as well.
Thank you.
Treasurer Palmer.
Well, it's a question I've been thinking about. What excites you about this opportunity?
Because I'm excited, sir.
Well, good, good. I appreciate that. The chance to return to local government. My time with Extension has been wonderful. I've enjoyed it. But in fairness, the traveling from one end of the state to the other is not as exciting as it used to be. And I always enjoyed my career in local government. That's what I was educated to do. That's what I spent my career doing prior to the Extension opportunity. And so the ability to come back to a local unit. And the biggest thing about it is that, as I say, the Extension job has been wonderful. Don't get me wrong, it's been wonderful, working with various units of government across the state. But the one thing that you don't get to see is the results of that. Did you make a difference to that community? We did a program I was part of at the Sioux, Sioux St. Buring. Great community, wonderful community. That was three, four years ago. Other than the initial feedback, I don't know if the community was able to initiate any further programming, any further development. Maybe they have, maybe they have. But we don't know that, we don't know that. And so that's a little frustrating because you put your heart and soul into those presentations and you try and give citizens and board members and cities, townships, counties, whatever, tools they need to move their community ahead, but you don't see the end results. So being here, we'll be able to see, just as you already have, your connector system, your water system, your streets, your sidewalks. You can see tangible things, parks, that, your fire hall. That was an idea somebody had at some point, and now it's there. It's been remodeled. So that tangible thing, being able to return to a local government in one setting and seeing if you can make a difference in that community.
Thank you.
Well, that brings us to our final question, Ms. Sel.
What else would you like to share with the board?
Well, first, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the questions. As you well know, this has been a very long process. It's been very thorough, but that's good, that is very good. And so it's just a, kind of just to reiterate this last question is simply that this, I saw this as a great opportunity. And someone asked me, to be fair, I don't recall who now, but someone asked me, why would I consider going here in the first place? Why would I apply to a township? Because I've worked in the city. And my answer was, your Governance Academy. Very few jurisdictions have taken it upon themselves to put that together to, for the betterment of their community and for the betterment of their citizens. And so being able to be part of the Governance Academy a year ago and to see how many topics were there, all 14 of them, and to be able to review, now, I haven't reviewed them all, but to review some of them and to see the quality of the people that you put together, that clearly said to me, yes, this is a good working community and this is something, a community that wants to be better than what it is. Not that it's bad, it's not. But it has goals and aspirations to be better than what it is and provide even more for its citizens than what it already does. So that was the gist of the overall as to, so it was a good, it was a good process. It was a very good process with that Governance Academy. So this was a good process. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Are there any other questions that anyone has on their mind that we haven't covered that you are itching to ask?
We've covered them.
You got enough?
I think so. And I know we'll also have more time with David.
Yes, we will. That's right. So you're joining us, the township, at our Halloween party, is that correct?
On Sunday, yes.
On Sunday. So that's an opportunity for anyone in the township to meet with you and interact, plus pony rides.
Right. I don't do that. Now, am I wrong, or is there another session yet this evening?
We invited the public
Okay.
to arrive on a Friday night.
Probably not.
We do have some folks here virtually.
Okay.
Okay.
It's true. I'm sorry?
I have pushed my clock as long as I can. I have a family commitment.
Oh, by all means.
But we got to the questions, and that was important, especially important. I would like to be excused.
Well, why don't we, since we are done with the sort of formal part of the meeting, why don't we adjourn if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn? And that way, we can, if there are people who show up and would like to interact in the reception.
Or folks who are online here, if they?
Oh.
I mean, I'm just saying, we could adjourn for Donna and then if folks would like to participate virtually.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we treat that portion of the meeting as sort of?
Sure.
as, as sort of, sort of segueing into the reception? And that way, it's less formal. But that also lets, we have other commitments.
I'll sneak out the bags.
So is, is there a motion to adjourn then?
I have a question, Will.
Yeah, sure.
Point of order. Are we going to offer the opportunity for public comment?
Yeah, we, I, I think what I was just proposing is that we treat that, we sort of segue into the reception and treat the public comment as sort of a, an opportunity for informal but outside of the, is that okay? Or do we need to still be in a formal meeting for that?
I think we could do it informally. We'll just keep Zoom on here.
Get out the door.
All right.
Okay.
So, so motion to adjourn.
You want it to adjourn?
Yeah, yeah, why don't, why don't we do that?
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn by Palmer, support by Corto, please call the role.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Don't go away.
So now, if there are members of the public who are, because we don't have any yet, who are here in person, if there are members of the public who have questions, online, remotely, right.
Sure, and I'll, and I'll invite you all, you know, feel free to, I'll promote folks to panelists so that they can turn on their camera if they wish. See, we've got some staff people here as well as some community folks.
Can I call you Paige?
Please.
Thank you, thank you.
We have a virtual donut as well.
All right, so anybody who would like to join in, please join us on video or voice. Move everybody in to be a panelist. And I see Chief Hood. You've got a chance to go over to the fire station, right, David? Super exciting day over there. It was moving day, just two days ago. So it had been moldy with rats over there, quite frankly. So very exciting.
No, I went through a public safety upgrade in Mount Pleasant. Ironically, the fire bags look very similar. Size-wise, dimension.
Yeah.
There's probably a certain
There could be.
uniformity to the fire facilities.
As, as I was mentioning to some of the firemen, is the reason, one of the reasons we needed an upgrade was the belly was old.
Yeah.
But two is the city was able to obtain a new ladder truck, new fire drum, and it wouldn't fit.
That's exactly, yes, this discussion has been going on for a few years. That was part of the reason for the upgrade is that. They would like a new ladder truck.
Yeah.
We're missing a pole for the firefighters to slide down to. I think we need one of those.
Yeah.
There is that in Mount Pleasant.
Yeah. Andy did show me, though, they installed a manhole or a person hole, you know, to climb through, just for training. So.
Oh, interesting.
So would anybody like to ask a question of our candidate or jump on screen? No pressure. We've got a few, just a few members of the public. And yes, Pam Boyd. Pam?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Pam.
Hi, um, hi David. I took one of your, at least one of your governance classes through Syo Township. And unfortunately, I got onto the meeting quite late. So I will be reviewing the video and my intent, I intend to come to the fire station on Sunday and might ask your question then. But I, I want to welcome you. I want to thank you for being a part of this. And I think that's about it. But thank you. We have a good, we have a good township. We have a lot of good citizens. And thank you for being here.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Pam. Anybody else, Rob or Diane? Gillian, Diane Benson? Oh, good. Diane Benson is our
Might as well.
A resident extraordinaire, but also served on our Township Administration Committee this past spring and also, for a short time, is our first-ever human resources consultant.
Okay.
And, and, and helped us create the administrator job description, project manager, HR, and some other building blocks here. So Diane, hello.
If you want to show me, you can.
Okay. I'm a little nervous. Do you have your Halloween costume on?
Hi. Here we go. Start my video.
Here you go.
Hi. Um, yes, I'm the one that left all the job descriptions for the jobs to be filled.
Okay, very good.
So, and while I was, I worked in the township from the end of May until mid-September, working on policies, trying to fill positions, et cetera. We had just started to begin to work on a COVID vaccine policy. Have you had any experience with developing such policy? Or how would you go about doing so?
The one that I'm most familiar with is basically the, for most units of government I've seen, is the mask and weekly testing. Is the one that's most, most common. This is the one that's most common. And that seems to solve a good number of, of the concerns. The distancing as well. The other thing that's common is that if you're in your own office and the door is, hopefully, the door could be shut, but you don't want to have the closed door all the time and giving the perception that no one can speak to you. But if you're in your own office, generally, the mask isn't required then. But if you're in the common areas, then it is. So you just keep it with you and as you move through various buildings. Most units of governments, I said, from what I've seen, that, that's how they've handled it. When COVID was in full, full force a year ago, when it first started, as you well know, most units just closed down and everything went online. But as they started to open up, the masking seems to be the most, most prevalent.
Thank you.
Diane, can I put you on the spot a little more? I assume you'd feel comfortable to say no. But, so Diane really was the very first person we ever had here, to my knowledge, with the term, with HR in her title. And we do hope to hire an HR generalist. You know, as clerk, a lot of things come to me. I, I think about things coming from MERS. You know, MERS has been working with us for years. And so I've got my contact there and, you know, filling out forms and doing reports. And they'll say things to us like, "Ooh, we can't wait for Syo to get an HR person finally." So, I mean, it is, it is one of these things where, where we've been so small. I think there's been a perception that we haven't really needed an HR function. And we've been so small that practically, you know, the fiscal side of it has been handled by our finance director with payroll and whatnot, kind of the required reports. And so, so we just haven't had, had much. And we're kind of at this gap right now where we're between Diane and whoever the new HR person's going to be and the new administrator. So I just wanted to kind of hear from you and invite you and Diane to talk a little bit about kind of how would you approach this whole new HR function, building it out here, since we really haven't had one? And have also had, we have a lot of new people, a lot of new great people, a lot of longtime people leaving. So just in the midst of a lot of transition.
Yeah, certainly, I'm happy to whoever is hired into the Township Administrator position to meet with that individual and go over what, what I've done, what I see that needs to be done. And I did, we did start searching for an HR generalist. We actually made an offer and the person had a family situation that she had to rescind the position. So it's kind of back to square one. I do agree with you as far as ways to search for individuals for both that HR position and the project managers to look at professional organizations, et cetera. And to definitely use some outwardly focused advertising. So I'm happy to, to come back and, and meet with you and if you have any questions. I'm actually going to be starting a temporary position. I'm a retiree from the University of Michigan in Human Resources. And I'm actually going to start a temporary position working back at the University of Michigan. So I just can't stay away.
Very good. I know, this is a brand-new position, so there hasn't been one. Are you familiar at all with the HR package, the BSNA software?
No.
We don't have that here.
Right. And I, and to be honest, I, I, I've not delved into a lot of it, but I know it exists and there's some features to it that may be worth considering. And it's certainly worth investigating to see. It's cloud-based, so the data is available from anywhere. But it has some interesting features just at first read that might be appropriate to assist the, the HR position. Now, if I, if I remember correctly, this was a part-time position or is this full?
Part-time.
This was part-time. So then, if it's, if it's part, then possibly the benefits of the package, the HR package, might, might be a little bit greater. But that'd be, that'd be a conversation to have once there's some investigation done. I don't know the cost, but we could get a quote and just see what BSNA has to say. BSNA is evolved, and the other thing I know, I've, I've worked with BSNA since 1988. So it's been, it's been a long time. But the one thing I do know about, about the company is that if you have a question, they're very responsive. And if there's something that needs to be modified, historically, they've been very willing to do that. So that there's some unique features that can be included in some of these packages that they have. But that, that's another option. Just take a look at, at the, at the program and just see if that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? I see one hand from Joe Caddinson. Joe?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Rob. Any other comments or questions for David? We have a lot of donuts here. If any comfortable attendees want to make some subs.
That's right. Rob's right across the street. He could just come over.
I know. I was going to say, Rob. There you go. There you go.
Actually, I'm looking for keto donuts. Is there such a thing?
I hope not.
Is it like, it sounds like an oxymoron.
Well, are these pumpkin spice donuts, though? I mean, it's Halloween time.
Right, right.
Sure, the one I had was very good, so. There's some kind of bread over there, too, or cake. Maybe that's pumpkin cake. I don't know. I'm sure there'll be pumpkin-themed stuff on Sunday.
Right, there we go.
Well, thank you, everyone, for, for joining. Those who joined remotely, thank you, David, for coming and being here with us again. We're looking forward to spending some more time with you on Sunday. And the board will be discussing the question of the Township Administrator, the next process, the next step in the process, when we meet in our regular meeting on Tuesday. Is that something you need me to be here for? Or what, is there? I don't think you need to be here on Tuesday. You, of course, it's a public meeting. So of course, you're welcome to be here, either in person or remotely.
I understand that.
But, but I don't think you, there's a need for you to. But thank you. I guess we could sort of, we could sort of say goodbye to everybody who is participating or walking.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much.